And I am excited to dig into today's materials and uh thank you again for joining. So what we'll need today is something to write on, something to write with um and the book itself. It's always great to have on hand and the book study guide. I'll put that in the chat in case you'd like to open that up if you don't have it handy. So those are the basic things that you need for today. Let's take a quick look at our agenda for today's session. The QR code, let's see. The QR code for the, I know we had a padlet QR code. Is that the QR code that you meant Christina?
Sorry, I meant the one for logging in. Um was there like a sign in one?
Oh, okay. There actually wasn't a sign in QR code. Uh let me back up. Yeah, it was just, I think the reading leak logo.
Um, okay, I'm sorry. I missed it.
You're fine.
On a second link. Okay, thank you.
Yep, no problem. We'll do uh, there's no official login. There's a uh sign out. There's an attendance form at the end, so.
Got it, thanks.
And that's just a link. Yeah, thanks for checking though. So our agenda for today is uh to really just reflect on the journey that we've gone through. Reading this text, there's a lot in the text. It's pretty dense and there's a lot of uh chances for application and reflection and we're just going to reflect on that to start off. We'll also think about uh how we can again connect to our practice and to our professional lives. And we'll be discussing that in breakout rooms. We'll be thinking about that implementation change formula that Nancy Hennessy discusses in that final chapter. And we'll end with a little bit more reflection and review. And our objective for tonight's session is really to reflect and review all that we've learned throughout the duration of this book study. And through reading that text, the changes that we'd like to make or that we're already putting in place. And how to utilize the blueprint in the coming years, not only this school year, but in future years as well. Because we know as she writes in chapter nine, it's hard to do all at once. And so thinking about how we can base that uh application of the blueprint would be a nice way to think about a long term change. And so again, we know that change is a journey and I'd love for you to take a few moments and reflect. What does your personal change journey look like with regard to literacy practices? I know that there's probably a large variety of answers. So think about since you first became interested in teaching to when you, to where you are now. What's your change journey been like in regard to your literacy practices? And your understanding of literacy and or reading in general? Take about four minutes to jot those thoughts down and then we'll share some out. I'll start a timer. For about one more minute. Do you think about five seconds and finish up where you are? Would anyone like to share some of what you wrote down, some of your journey?
Well, I guess I'll share. How are you today?
Good, how are you?
I'm well, thank you. Um, I'm sorry for joining late. I was trying to prepare for training that I have to do tomorrow, present. And so I'm just kind of all over the place, but um something about our journey. So and I'm not sure if I heard the question correctly, but learning more as research evolves and changes our perspective on the best ways to um not just teach literacy, but to teach period. Because literacy is in all subjects, literacy is in everything that we do. And um although a lot of things are the same, but on the other hand, we still have a lot of things that have changed. And so we have to be willing to be that continuous learner and not just be that learner and intake all the knowledge. But to make sure that we are transferring that into our daily practices, whether that's with teaching or presenting professional development or whatever that may be, it might be mentoring. But um just being willing to know that um that there are new things out there to try. And if it works, it works, but we'll only know if it works is only if we try to put it into place.
Yes, I agree. And I love that you brought up literacy is in all subjects. And that we need to be willing learners and then transfer that no matter how we're doing that. I think that's so powerful because we can read all the books and watch all the webinars. But if we're not putting that into action, then we're just sort of holding on to that. That's so powerful. Yeah, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Would anyone else like to share some of your thoughts, some of your journey and experiences?
Um, I was thinking about how much more thoughtful and data driven I have become. That compared especially compared to when I first started out and I just did, I just needed to keep my head above water. But now I'm just continuing to learn new things and being able to um think about why am I doing this in my classroom? Or why should teachers do this in their classroom? So I think I'm just a lot more thoughtful and purposeful, intentional with with the way I do things.
Absolutely. Thank you for sharing that. Other thoughts or experiences that anyone would like to share? I remember when I first started teaching, I did not feel equipped to teach reading, to teach students how to read. I don't really remember how I learned to read. And I know that I always loved reading and read a great deal. Um, but when I got to the classroom and I was working with sixth graders, I really felt at a loss to teach students who were still struggling to read proficiently. And at the school I was at for a number of years, we were using um FMP. And I would go ahead and do that and I would benchmark. And I would not necessarily understand the difference between uh, you know, a level I and a level L. And I didn't know how to help students move in that system. And then what I was doing in the classroom and how that was impacting kids. And I always just felt like that was a huge area of weakness for me. And I didn't get that training in my teacher preparatory program. And it wasn't until I took letters that I really understood that there were uh phonemes beyond just uh my understanding of the graph themes of our language, the 26 letters of the alphabet. And so when I began learning all of that information in letters and then began doing sort of my own exploration into structured literacy and the science of reading. I suddenly became well aware of the ways in which I hadn't been prepared to teach reading and the ways in which I could then change my instruction. And I wish I could have turned back the clock and helped those students in the first seven years of my teaching that I hadn't been able to teach as effectively as I feel like I could now. And so that's sort of my change journey. And when I think about the change journey I've gone on since I first read the reading blueprint, it's really helped me dial in those upper strands of Scarborough's reading rope and think about how we can effectively instruct students in all of those language comprehension strands of the rope. Because that too, beyond my understanding of phonics and phonemic awareness and phonological skills, was a little more murky. Um, and so I just really appreciated the way in which Nancy Hennessy broke down those strands and gave us really concrete strategies and evidence based techniques that we can use in the classroom to help our students. That's just a little bit about my personal change journey. Any other thoughts or additions that you'd like to share? Ashley?
Um, yeah, so I guess, you know, being a special ed teacher, when I started out like a long time ago, 30 years ago, um, my training was all in SRA, so like the direct instruction. And then when I had a job in Waukesha, you know, then it was interesting because, well, first of all, my co-teacher before that didn't do SRA at all. So I was learning something totally different, which she just picked novels and um worked through those. And then um got the Orin Gillingham training. So I guess, you know, and then Sande training. And then I've also always just been looking for new programs out there that colleagues might be familiar with or that they've heard about, just because I feel like my kids are already so far behind. My goal is to get them obviously as far as I can in the time that I have them. So just, you know, I've always just been constantly learning um new things and and open to new things. Um, and then willing to try and reflect on those.
Thank you so much. I think that's wonderful. And that's exactly uh, you know, what we need to do as teachers and as mentors and colleagues and to help our um, you know, the colleagues that we work with to help them along on their change journeys along with ours. So thank you so much, Ashley. Any other thoughts? Right, we are going to move into breakout rooms next to talk about our key takeaways from this chapter in a smaller setting. And so we're going to have uh three participants in breakout room. I'm going to send this document in the chat. Take two minutes and just scan this document and think about which questions you want to focus on and any initial thoughts that you have regarding these questions. These are all um about chapter nine. So I'll put two minutes on the timer. Let me know if you have any questions. All right, I'm going to open up those breakout rooms. Again, please feel free to discuss any or all of those prompts. And feel free to discuss the rest of the text as well, or anything else that's pertinent in your discussion in your breakout rooms. We'll be in our breakout rooms for 20 minutes. I will give you that 60 second countdown at minute 19 so you can wrap up and come back to the main room. If you'd like to share any points that you discussed in your breakout rooms, think about what you would like to share and we'll have some time to talk about those when we come back to our main session. Any questions before we move into those breakout rooms? All right, I will see you in 20 minutes. If you need me, just hit that help button and I'll operate it. This formula for success really does a nice job of again spelling out exactly what is needed in terms of our schools, our individuals and our systems to create change and to make sure that change uh is lasting. So we're going to break down these different pieces of this formula a little bit more in depth together. And if you have questions or connections or thoughts, please jump in. You can uh hit that hand raise button, or you can feel free to just unmute and jump right in. We're a fairly small group this afternoon. So when we think about the what of effective interventions, um we can turn to page 207 to take a look at what Nancy Hennessy writes. Um, but these are the main points. And so I'm going to just talk a little bit about those main points and then pause for any thoughts or questions or connection. So we can use this framework that she provides within the text as the what. So using and planning for our informed instructional practices is really the cornerstone. It is the blueprint itself. But we also need to consider the delivery of instruction beyond our planning and our design. And so she talked a little bit about fidelity and fidelity, uh she writes, is the degree to which teachers are implementing a program or curriculum materials as intended by whoever designed that program or curriculum materials. I know that we hear that word fidelity a lot in education and uh we probably hear it a lot in our schools and our um buildings. And Nancy suggests using a checklist to ensure that we have fidelity so that we have open communication and we are able to provide and respond to feedback. And this isn't something she says that should be evaluative or punitive, but should be framed and understood to be empowering. We really want to make sure that we are achieving as educators what we've set out to achieve. We don't want to evaluate one another. We want to just help one another and making sure that we are doing the things that we need to do to implement programs or curriculum material as best as we can. We uh know that that takes a great deal of vulnerability and that, oh, can you know, can people not see anything on the screen? I'm sorry.
I can see it.
Okay, let me, I will uh just share again so that in case other people cannot see it. All right, I shared again. I hope that everybody can see that. I don't know if that worked for you. No, I'm so sorry. I don't know. Maybe if you want to leave and come back real quick, that might fix it. I'll let you in. Um, so we know that being vulnerable and being open to feedback is a really important role of being an educator, even though it's easier said than done. And through being vulnerable and providing and responding to feedback through something like a checklist, we can then grow and learn about our instruction, the instruction of others, and then make informed decisions about what supports and changes we might need to make. And when we think about that concept of fidelity again, we, it's critical to change because if we start making incremental individual changes in our classrooms, eventually our instruction is going to be very different than the instruction of another grade level colleague who's using the same materials and the same program um down the hall because they've also then made their own individual tweaks and changes. And we're not necessarily talking about things like teaching styles or approaches or how we connect with our students. We're thinking about the actual language and structure of the materials that we're using. When we don't necessarily use those things with fidelity, our instruction is going to be different because we've elected to do different things, we've elected to add some things or take out some other items or portions of the lesson. And when we do that, we can drift so far from those original materials and programs that it's hard to say what's impacting students positively or negatively. And it's hard to determine whether our students are growing because of our instruction or the program or the changes that we've made. And so when our instruction becomes really different from one another because of all those individual changes over the course of time, our students are getting a drastically different experience, even though they might just be down the hall from one another in the same grade. And so thinking about using a checklist like Nancy suggests on page 208 and 209 can really be powerful in helping us align our practices, align what we consider to be fidelity to a program or curriculum materials and begin to implement pieces of the blueprint. And so I'm going to ask you to look at those pages, pages 208 and 209, and think about whether or not you do something similar in your schools. And if you don't, how you could imagine implementing something along those lines? And whether or not it would be useful for how it might be received in your schools? So if you turn open to page 208 and 209, you can see those various little checklists. She does say we wouldn't use all of these at once. We would just start with one checklist and then as we get um accustomed to that process and dial in our instruction, we can then take a look at others. So take about three minutes, just look over those checklists and think about, do you use something similar? If you do, how does that go? If you don't, how could you imagine be uh beginning to use checklist like this in your school? And you might then begin to implement this checklist in your PLC if it's a small group or even if it's a large group, if it's a if it's a school-wide PLC as opposed to a grade-level PLC, for example. Or if you don't have those formal structures and you'd still like to implement the checklist, maybe you and a partner teacher or a colleague who's your friend and you have a level of trust with, you could pick one of these checklists and begin to use it between the two of you. And then perhaps that will spread out to other colleagues in your building and make a positive impact. Think that one of the uh, most uh, effective ways to build buy-in or interest with teachers is seeing that something is results-driven. When we see the positive impacts these things have on our students, we also want to know what the teacher down the hall is doing. And so being able to start on a smaller scale and then build out as people gain interest and see the effects that it has on students is a great way to sort of build change from bottom up. Other thoughts or questions or connections about uh, the what or these checklist? We are going to take a look at effective implementation methods next. And so we know that implementation strategies are multi-layered. And we on not only need to identify what the change is that we want to make, we also then need to organize an implementation team. We need to outline phases and we need to really think about and attend to the supports that we need and whether or not those are enough to support the change that we envision. And so this process and an implementation team really work to ensure that change is managed over time since it doesn't happen uh, suddenly, but we know it's a long-term sort of process. And a team is really important because it allows for that macro view that we don't often get when we are the ones in uh, you know, at the ground level enacting the change. And uh, the idea of a team again helps, I think, signal that this is something that we're all uh, a part of. Our team is there to support everybody who is making the change in classrooms and that supports while they might not be readily available at first will be identified and hopefully um, given over time so that the implementation goes as smoothly as possible. Thoughts or questions or connections on any one of these factors? And the last portion uh, is enabling contexts. And in order to achieve those intended outcomes that we want, we need to have these in place as well. We know that changes not only take place in our classrooms uh, and schools and districts, but also outside of our four walls, in our communities, in teacher preparatory programs, and at the state and national level. Ultimately, though, we only have control over the environments that we have a direct impact on. Within our schools and districts, do we have people who are willing to change? Even if it means learning new things, being vulnerable, and leaving behind practices that we might have used for decades? If not, what can we do to help those people become willing to change? And together, these three factors, effective interventions, effective implementation methods, and enabling contexts result in the ability to realize and achieve our intended outcomes. And I really just love the way she broke that down with a formula. I love a good concrete formula, like the simple view of reading, for example, to really think about those main components of change. And this, I think, clearly spells out exactly what we need to do in a way that makes the blueprint really tangible and easily, not so easily, uh, adaptable for our schools. It's a lot of work, but I love the ways in which she clearly broke down all of those components. Elizabeth?
I just wanted to say that I also, you know, was making that connection to the simple view and how it's a multiplication equation where the product or the outcome is only going to be as strong as its weakest link.
Yes, thank you so much. Any other thoughts or connections or questions that you had? I am going to prompt you now to put some thoughts down in writing. And so we're going to take four minutes and I'm going to ask you, how could using this formula that we just broke down? And how could aligning your instruction to the reading comprehension blueprint benefit your school? Jot down your thoughts to that question and we'll share out some of what you wrote down after those four minutes are up. For thirty seconds. And finish up your thinking or your writing. Would anyone like to share some of your thinking or some of what you wrote down?
Um, so in our, the school where I work, um, our students are those who have not had success in the schools where they're coming from. And so for us to be able to um, provide that for them, where they're like developing confidence as readers and people can see that, that's um, like it's, how could it benefit our school? We're, we're working to become like a leader, a professional leader for those around us. So we want to be able to show this is what can be done um, so that we can, you know, spread, spread the joy um, and see it happen in other places. Um, because it's great when you see kids actually um, just really grow and they can see it. It's so powerful.
Yes, absolutely. That's, it's so inspiring. Thank you, uh, Bev. Anyone else? No matter how you might conceptualize using uh, this reading comprehension blueprint or any of those checklist or that formula that we just spent a little bit of time talking about, I uh, you know, would love to hear those stories if you do implement any of those pieces and you do see the benefits in your students and your schools. If you uh, email me after the fact during the school year, I'd love to hear those uh, firsthand accounts. Because it's always nice to get those moments of inspiration and knowing that all the hard work that we're doing is really positively impacting our students and our schools and our communities. So definitely please stay in touch if you uh, do any of this work. We're going to move next into our last breakout room session for the evening. I'm going to ask you to think about what chapter or chapters did you not have a chance to really in-depth discuss or learn about during one of our sessions together? And uh, which you would like to take the time to explore a little bit more now. And so because this is our last evening together, our last session, we are going to think about being able to have those opportunities to dig a little bit deeper into those chapters, to discuss those chapters a little bit more in depth. So I'm going to, I've sectioned off um, the ways in which we can think about those various parts and how we can move into breakout rooms to reflect those various chapters. So I'm going to drop this link in the chat. I'm going to open it up here. So I've compiled a uh, in a Google Doc, I've compiled links to all of the different questions that I posed for each of the sessions. And so we're going to move into one of three breakout rooms. Breakout room number one is going to focus on those first three chapters of the um, text itself, so dimensions of skilled reading, viewpoints on reading comprehension, and the blueprint. Breakout room two is really going to be dedicated to chapters four through six. Vocabulary, syntax and sentence structure and text structures. And then breakout room three is going to focus on background knowledge and levels of understanding and inference. When you get into your breakout rooms, you can discuss which chapter or which topic you'd most like to dig into. You might all agree that um, levels of understanding and inference is the topic that you'd most like to focus on in that third breakout room, and that's going to drive your conversation. You don't have to use any of these prompts and any of these questions. I just linked them all here so that you have a one-stop shop of uh, reference for all the questions that we've posed and wrestled with throughout the uh, last three sessions of this book study. I'm going to ask you to just take a minute and think about which breakout room you'd like to go in. What discussions would you most like to have for the next twenty minutes? And so just reflect on that and then um, I'll ask you to just put in the chat your preference. You've already decided what breakout room? Please feel free to put them in the chat. It is helpful to see how many people are going to move into each room. The, a lot of people would like uh, to breakout room number two, so chapters four through six. Right, so seems like a lot of people want breakout room two. And I think that we have Elizabeth and Hope who uh, one wanted to focus on uh, the third breakout room, chapters seven and eight. And we had uh, Hope who wanted to focus on breakout room one. Elizabeth and Hope, I'll put you two together. And then everyone else, I'll put in breakout room two and you can have a really nice big conversation with a lot of people. Let's see, we'll just go into two breakout rooms. And again, you'll just drive the conversation to the topics that you would like to focus on in this last breakout room. And so Elizabeth and Hope, I'm going to send you into breakout room one and you can discuss chapters one through three and seven and eight. And everyone else, I'm going to put in breakout room two and you can discuss chapters four through six and any topics that you would like um, beyond those chapters as well. Does anybody have any questions about the next twenty minutes in breakout rooms before we head out? I will see you back in twenty minutes. I'll give you that sixty-second countdown and I hope you have excellent discussion. Welcome back. Thank you so much for participating in that final breakout room session. Would anyone like to share anything that came up for you? Would anyone like to share anything that came up for you Would anyone like to share anything that came up for you Would anyone like to share anything that came up for you in terms of your discussion or questions from either one of those breakout rooms? in terms of your discussion or questions from either one of those breakout rooms? in terms of your discussion or questions from either one of those breakout rooms? I'm sure you have great discussions and I'm glad that we are able to have those I'm sure you have great discussions and I'm glad that we are able to have those I'm sure you have great discussions and I'm glad that we are able to have those through smaller discussions so that you can all dig into the topics that you're most interested in. through smaller discussions so that you can all dig into the topics that you're most interested in. through smaller discussions so that you can all dig into the topics that you're most interested in. I know again, these questions have gone quickly I know again, these questions have gone quickly I know again, these questions have gone quickly and it's always hard to get, uh, get in those thorough discussions during the limited time that we have together. and it's always hard to get, uh, get in those thorough discussions during the limited time that we have together. and it's always hard to get, uh, get in those thorough discussions during the limited time that we have together. So I appreciate it. So I appreciate it. So I appreciate it. The last thing that we're going to do together is a Padlet activity. The last thing that we're going to do together is a Padlet activity. The last thing that we're going to do together is a Padlet activity. And this is the same Padlet that we've been using. And this is the same Padlet that we've been using. And this is the same Padlet that we've been using. The previous Padlet responses have been archived and added to that resources document. The previous Padlet responses have been archived and added to that resources document. The previous Padlet responses have been archived and added to that resources document. And I'll share that, um, at the end of our time together today. And I'll share that, um, at the end of our time together today. And I'll share that, um, at the end of our time together today. This final Padlet opportunity is really just asking you to think about the biggest takeaway that you have. This final Padlet opportunity is really just asking you to think about the biggest takeaway that you have. This final Padlet opportunity is really just asking you to think about the biggest takeaway that you have. What really sparked an idea or what really, um, generated a lot of thought for you What really sparked an idea or what really, um, generated a lot of thought for you What really sparked an idea or what really, um, generated a lot of thought for you in terms of moving forward? in terms of moving forward? in terms of moving forward? If you could share with somebody what you got out of reading this book and participating in this book study, If you could share with somebody what you got out of reading this book and participating in this book study, If you could share with somebody what you got out of reading this book and participating in this book study, what would it be? How could you jot that down? what would it be? How could you jot that down? what would it be? How could you jot that down? If you have more than one big takeaway, feel free to include more than one in this Padlet. If you have more than one big takeaway, feel free to include more than one in this Padlet. If you have more than one big takeaway, feel free to include more than one in this Padlet. And if you have time, please respond to other people's posts as well. And if you have time, please respond to other people's posts as well. And if you have time, please respond to other people's posts as well. So we're going to spend about ten minutes doing this. I'll put the link to the Padlet in the chat. So we're going to spend about ten minutes doing this. I'll put the link to the Padlet in the chat. So we're going to spend about ten minutes doing this. I'll put the link to the Padlet in the chat. You can also, of course, use that QR code that you see on the screen. You can also, of course, use that QR code that you see on the screen. You can also, of course, use that QR code that you see on the screen. I'm going to open up this Padlet just again to show briefly how we can actually post on the Padlet itself. I'm going to open up this Padlet just again to show briefly how we can actually post on the Padlet itself. I'm going to open up this Padlet just again to show briefly how we can actually post on the Padlet itself. The directions are here in green. The directions are here in green. The directions are here in green. In the bottom right corner, you can click that little plus button. In the bottom right corner, you can click that little plus button. In the bottom right corner, you can click that little plus button. It turns into a pencil icon and you can write a subject line It turns into a pencil icon and you can write a subject line It turns into a pencil icon and you can write a subject line or you can just go ahead and type in the body of the email or the post itself. or you can just go ahead and type in the body of the email or the post itself. or you can just go ahead and type in the body of the email or the post itself. And you can type whatever you wish. And you can type whatever you wish. And you can type whatever you wish. You can also add some artifacts if you have anything that you'd like to add, You can also add some artifacts if you have anything that you'd like to add, You can also add some artifacts if you have anything that you'd like to add, either a document, a link, an image, so on and so forth. either a document, a link, an image, so on and so forth. either a document, a link, an image, so on and so forth. And then you should be able to comment on other people's as well. And then you should be able to comment on other people's as well. And then you should be able to comment on other people's as well. So we're going to take about ten minutes and engage in this, uh, final takeaway activity. So we're going to take about ten minutes and engage in this, uh, final takeaway activity. So we're going to take about ten minutes and engage in this, uh, final takeaway activity. And then we will begin wrapping up our final session. And then we will begin wrapping up our final session. And then we will begin wrapping up our final session.